So that our accusations of malfeasance and impropriety and vote for it or resign type things could be clarified, and I think any attempt to shut off our concerns directly related to the fact that the city attorney made a decision based on the last meeting should be allowed to be heard.
Ms. Balance has stated she's going to move it to council committee.
Yes, since you all are shutting me down every time I try to talk about stuff.
Just one brief note. At council's leisure, this was not simply because I was requested by someone from the mayor's office or someone other. This is part of the duties of the city attorney as I see them. I have viewed the tape before in other instances where issues came up at council. This is one I brought back to your attention because I think there was a problem here, not because it's been requested particularly by anyone.
Yes, ma'am.
One of the bottom lines to me is, the ballot issue says that this hunt should be carried out within areas prescribed by the Arkansas Game and Fish Committee. I emailed Mr. Schoen and he said, his reply, and I asked him specifically, "Mr. Schoen, what is the legal definition of the word 'proscribed'?" His reply to me, "Black's Law Dictionary defines it as to outlaw or prohibit." This hunt is supposed to take place in areas prescribed by the Arkansas Game and Fish Commission, prohibited by the Arkansas Game and Fish Commission. The Arkansas Game and Fish Commission does not prohibit hunting in urban areas. Therefore, the ballot issue that the people voted on is it's impossible, it is impossible to deliver what the people voted on. I know people think they researched and they thought they knew what they were voting on, but the last city council who dropped this in our laps to take care of all this either was unaware that the word 'proscribed' means to outlaw or prohibit or forbid, or they were unaware that the Arkansas Game and Fish Commission does not prescribe hunting within city limits, or I don't know who wrote the ballot issue, but maybe whoever wrote the ballot issue wasn't really in favor of this hunt, and so they left that little word 'proscribe' in there so that a discerning council could say, "Look, this says it's supposed to be within prescribed areas." There are no prescribed areas. Now, I understand that the time to change, the ballot issue has long passed, and so the ballot issue says what it says, what it says, and what it says is in areas prescribed. That does not exist. Areas prescribed within the city limits of Eureka Springs by the AGFC does not exist. Therefore, it is impossible, impossible to deliver what the people thought they were voting for. So maybe we need to drop the whole doggone thing and write up an ordinance that says exactly what's going to happen, exactly what can happen, because the people obviously want bloodshed. They obviously want a deer hunt, so maybe we need to go back to square one, write up a new ordinance, have a special election. I mean, we can have a special election for other things that people think we need to have special elections for and pay for them, so maybe we should have a special election on this to put it back to the people exactly how it is supposed to be, instead of offering them one thing. It's just like, you know, vote for a steak dinner, and the people vote for the steak dinner, and when they get to the table, it's hot dogs. Or it's something that's not even edible, which is more in line with what's happening here, because we cannot deliver what the people voted for. It's impossible. So we're trying to give them something different. We're trying to give them something different, something different, something different. Maybe we need to just drop the whole doggone thing and go back to square one and put it in front of the people what it really can be, what it really is, instead of having them vote on a pig, having them vote on a pig and a poke that we cannot possibly deliver. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Ms. Limble.
Well, I tend to agree, because there were several things that I've found out. In ordinance 2127, it says, "Whereas the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has made a comprehensive study and review of possible overpopulation, possible and probable are what caused the problems in our last venture at voting." And I can't see where, since Game and Fish, when they came in here, said that they didn't know if Eureka was overpopulated, nor was there any way they could find out, how the city council could possibly have done a comprehensive study and review of the overpopulation of deer here. And I agree, it says, "According to regulations promulgated and times set by Arkansas Game and Fish," which was not done, it was set by the committee as far as I can see, and the word 'proscribe,' you know, prescription.
Point of order? This is not germane to our discussion. We have an item on discussion, which is the opinion of the city attorney. He was going to give it for the camera. If we're going to have this item on the agenda, again, this can all be saved for that point in time.
That's true. Yes, ma'am.
Fine, I'll give up my discussion time. Obviously, Mr. DeVito's in a big hurry. I remember one meeting where he went out.
Excuse me, point of order.
It's not relevant. It is not relevant.
Yeah, it is relevant. We're in a hurry.
Mr. Pennell.
We're in a hurry.
In closing, I'd like to read the last section of the ordinance of 2127, and if I hear an out of order, I'm going to get up and smack whoever says it. And it gives us cause to think in the future. This ordinance had an emergency clause in it, and it says, "Since it is necessary to quickly address issues of possible overpopulation by deer within the city for the preservation of peace, public peace, health, and safety, an emergency is hereby declared to exist, and this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage and approval." That date was 23 August 2010. Boy, that was really a big emergency. And to the lighter side, I'd like to read the last portion.
Point of order? You stated that you were only going to read that one line.
I said I was going to read part of it.
Is this really necessary?
I'm just trying to show how ridiculous this whole thing has got. Section two, that talks about the bow hunt being according to regulations promulgated, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Arkansas Game and Fish Commission and their constitutional authority to regulate the dane and fish population of the state of Arkansas. So, okay, let's make sure we figure out how to regulate the dane population in Arkansas.
Yeah, good luck with that.
Moving on.
I move to take a 10-minute break.
A second.
I've got.
I say we four, John.
One, two, three, four items left.
Well, fortunately, it's a democracy and we get to vote on it, so I guess it'll go one way or the other.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose?
No.
Part of their mission is to assist municipalities in determining the best course for mapping projects. Mr. Culpepper's recommendation was to wait for the parcel map to be completed, because this will give us a comprehensive base at no cost. The zoning map we already have from McClellan will need to be converted into one that is GIS compatible. This can be done during the same period that the parcel map is being completed. Then the two can be merged, but will need to be geo-referenced for accuracy. The geo-referencing can be done using personal GPS systems, even smartphones, by staff and interested commissioners. The map merging can be done by cast, or they will help us find a firm or consultant to do it. Once the merging is completed, a proof map will be available for input from those who will be using it: realtors, abstractors, city government, interested members of the public. After the map is completed and certified, its GIS format will allow it to be kept up to date at a reasonable cost. The cost for the map should be approximately what is already allocated, $6,000, but the timeframe will be moved to early next spring, assuming the parcel maps are done by year's end. In Mr. Culpepper's opinion, waiting for the parcel map would give us the most useful product at the most reasonable cost.
Thank you. Any questions? No, we'll move on. Number four, number five been postponed, number six, discussion employee handbook update. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Floor is open. Mr. Pennell.
The reason I requested this be put on the agenda, the last review was done and approved November 12, 2007, and I believe that there is a need for a review, and I will just give an example that since this last review, there was also inserted verbiage to the extent about, let's see, offering up, but making, there was a resolution passed several councils ago between now and back to the 2007 date, so I guess it would be two, possibly three councils, where a resolution was passed granting the same rights to partnership registry members, and it was never put into the employee manual, which is part of the guide that the employees are given and are requested to follow. And I was just wanting to make sure that those benefits were updated in the employee manual, and also it's been quoted a couple times recently as far as hiring and firing policies. So I just feel like it's necessary that there be a complete review of the personnel policy handbook that was adopted by ordinance 2061, October 8, 2007.
Anybody else? Want to recommend a workshop on that, Mr. Pennell?
I'm almost afraid to. Everything else has been a workshop, proposal's been voted.
Okay, no further discussion, we'll move on. Number seven's resolution, professional services bond. Yes, sir.
Is it dead? There's not going to be any review?
Nobody said anything. I ask for any other comments.
You ask if we wanted to have a workshop, so.
They've been there, went silent, so I assumed it was done. Ms. Limble.
I'll make a motion that we have a workshop on employee handbook.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Can you oppose?
No.
Mr. DeVito, would you vote no?
You'd have heard me if I'd voted no.
He voted yes. Yes, ma'am.
So what was the final vote, please?
Four aye. I believe we have a workshop coming. Four aye.
May I say something? The only reason I ask is because I want to have the record be accurate, and that's the reason I ask you for your vote. Not to annoy you, but to make sure I'm in line.
Moving on. Number seven.
Point in addition to that.
Yes, sir.
Based on the rules, it's supposed to be restated after something is voted on what the vote was, and if that's not clarifiable.
I thought I said four aye.
She has every right to ask, and so.
The vote was four aye.
Is that it? No. If it is, then we'll move on. Number seven. Resolution professional services bond for fire EMS. I believe we're still working on that one, so hopefully by next time we'll have a resolution for that.
So are you postponing that?
Yes.
I postponed it earlier.
Excuse me?
Nothing.
Just want to phone. Okay. Number eight was taken off. Number nine, signed ordinance.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Second.
Would you?
I'm not asking anybody to vote on anything tonight, Mr. DeVito.
Excuse me?
I sent to the city clerk and the city attorney. I didn't get any response back, so I was beginning to wonder if I even have a computer that works with my email that contains the proposed ordinance, the revised chapter as was reviewed by the planning commission, Mr. Leswig and myself, and I apologize for taking over a year, but I want to tell you something. This thing goes back so far and was such a mess that it was originally passed as one thing in the code, then it was changed again, and then whoever codified it, there was a note at the bottom of it that basically said that the editor of this codification chose to select a different numbering system as everybody went on following the old numbering system. So we went from chapter 86 to chapter 52 to 72 to whatever. So within the best of the powers that I had with all the reviews, so you'll know what you're looking at whenever you get ready to possibly bring this to the table, is that the body of the ordinance has not changed. There has been no references that, I think there's been a couple items pending from planning commission regards to digital signs, non-conforming signs that have been put in abeyance until this signed ordinance got reviewed, and to give you an idea, there was seven different ordinances reverted back from chapter seven to 28, sometime between ordinance 1399 and dated August 14, 1990, and ordinance 1782 dated October 13. So I've done my best with the review from the planning commission and specifically Mr. Leswig, who I respected his opinion and review on, and in conjunction with municipal league codification individual, Ms. Moran, that the only thing that would have to be read is my understanding is the proposed ordinance and appealing, and you can read the proposed. I think there's a couple ordinance numbers I left out, but as far as thinking we're going to have to sit here and listen to a multi-page ordinance being read has not been what I was led to believe by municipal league in correcting numbering. There was no changes in the ordinance as it was written. It was just, 7.84 didn't exist, but they modified it in one ordinance, so we put it where it was best fitted numbering as it was best numbered. So if you have any constructive criticism, feel free to bring it to the table. That's the only reason I wanted to have discussion and status of it. It is done, finally, by the date that I said it would be, or I would give up my seat at this table, and it's all in y'all's capable hands now.
Any further? Ms. Limble.
Yeah, I don't think I have it. I know, maybe I do.
Well, you probably don't. I sent it to the city clerk and the city attorney. Whether they decide to pass it on, I don't know.
Any further? I thought that'll conclude your business. Moves this into agenda setting.
Move to discuss.
Second.
Second.
Floor is open. Mr. Pennell.
I'd like to see the signed ordinance put on the agenda for approval, attempted approval.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Limble.
I'd like to add reconsideration of the deer hunt.
Second.
Yes, ma'am.
And I would like to re-add the sewer committee ordinance so that we can do further research on it and see about the possibilities of changing it and making it a better ordinance, better proposed ordinance.
Second.
Any others? Should we?
I would like to explore the costs and the issues involved with moving council's chambers to the courthouse upstairs. Thank you.
Any else? Nothing else, that'll conclude agenda setting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? Okay. Then moves to council committees. Ms. Balance.
I'd like to wish my funny Valentine a happy birthday. Thank you, that's all.
Mr. Berry's out. Mr. DeVito.
I'd like to speak to those of you that are left watching tonight about representation. It's a very important topic regardless of whether it's city, state, or federal. This Wednesday, from 5 until 9 o'clock at DeVito's restaurant, there will be a fundraiser for Butch Berry and his run to be our state representative. It's unfortunate that we're going to lose Mr. Berry's capable talents here at the council table, but I think we have an opportunity to have a person from Eureka Springs elected to the state house. I don't know in the quarter decade, or the quarter century that I've been in Eureka that we've ever had a representative from Eureka Springs. You remember our last representative, Brian King, when he tried to outlaw domestic partners statewide? Luckily, the mayor, Joy, at that time, was able to go to Little Rock and convince the legislature that that was not the proper avenue for the state. I feel it's very important that Mr. Berry get elected to the state house, and we're going to be providing dinner from 5 until 9. You'll be able to order off the menu. 75 percent of all proceeds will go to Mr. Berry's election fund. Invite everybody in the community to attend. It'll be great, all of us getting together and breaking bread with Mr. Berry, so just like a normal night at the restaurant, whenever you're ready, come on down. We'll have our regular menu, there'll be a couple of specials, and hopefully we can get a good turnout and raise some good money, because this is an important race for Eureka Springs. It's important that we have our voice at the state legislature, and we have the opportunity to elect a very competent and capable person, and I invite everybody watching to tell your friends and to please attend.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Limble.
I'd like to thank all the people who donated to the cemetery, who donated plants and time and whatever they donated. The cemetery committee doesn't have a budget line anymore. They kind of eke along on their own, and I know that a lot of people who have lived here over the years, having been here for 38 years, have been buried out in the cemetery. A lot of their relatives still live in Eureka Springs, and, you know, cemetery or not, it's also a beautiful place to go have lunch, which I have done. I just think it's really great that all of those people have donated time and that Gloria has donated her time to be out there and put time in, and frankly, I would like to see a lot more support for a cemetery than it gets. I'd also like to remind everyone that Del Fay Marcellus is coming to the auditorium September 22. He is a trombonist, and he is the brother of Winton and I forgot the other brother's name, that plays saxophone. The Marcellus family is, you know, huge in the jazz field. They are one of the most prominent families, if not the prominent family, in jazz. The concert's the 22nd. I do not have the time. You have to go online to the odd. Unfortunately, you can only buy your tickets online or show up the night, I guess, half an hour before the performance to get your tickets? I don't know, I'm not clear on that one. But I would urge everyone to take advantage of this. If you buy your tickets in advance, they're discounted. I think they're $15, which is a total bargain to see someone like this and have that person come right to our town. Plus, if you look in the papers, there's a lot of other bands that are playing on other nights and also in the park. But if you can't make it to anything else, the show in the auditorium is going to be top-notch, first-rate. auditorium is going to be top-notch, first-rate, world-renowned. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Pennell.
I would just like to address those who have contacted me and also my fellow council people regarding the deer hunt. I believe every due diligence has been taken, was taken, maybe even misguided to a degree as far as lack of proper words, proper verbiage. I would have to say that in the last three days, my 38 against the hunt and 7 for the hunt spoke well for the concerns of what the citizenry voted for, and I believe some of the accusations that have been thrown at this table by private citizens and those who are even running for seats at this table are a little unfair, because I don't think there was any intent purposely to usurp what the voters had voted for. It was taking the information given after that and the lack of information that we've received periodically over the last two years at this table of the status of rules and things that were going to happen, and I really regret the fact that there are some people, some of whom I had great respect for, throwing out words of malfeasance, misfeasance, getting emails that says vote for or resign, or, you know, I'm going to shoot you with a poison dart, or whatever the case might be. I think it's a little bit strong, and I think the intent at this table was honest and just, and I hope that the citizenry, both those for and against, allow this table to get this to the point where it needs to be in the future. I have to say I have nothing to lose by my position at this table over the next three and a half months. The time served isn't necessarily time served as a sentence, but time served in trying to provide for this city the best possible resolutions have sometimes gone for naught, sometimes we've made progress, but I encourage people to continue applying for commissions. If you don't see your name brought up and you've applied for a commission, let your council people know. I get a lot of calls that say, I know you aren't my councilman in my ward, but I never hear back from mine, so, you know, I'm just trying to hit all the bases, and I tell them I represent everybody, not just Ward 1. So I thank those that have given input, continue to give input, continue to give support to this table and the administration. Thank you.
Mr. Raffiel.
Thank you.
Give you a list of events coming up, September 12 through the 15th, scooting in the Ozarks, September 14 through the 16th, flute discovery with John Two Hawks, September 20, poet luck at Writer's Colony, September 20 through the 23, Jazz Eureka, September 20 through the 23, Seventh Annual Studio Tour. Start off my comments also by saying that our prayers and thoughts go out to the Gary Hayhurst family. Pastor Gary passed away, I believe yesterday morning. He will be missed at his church and in the community. For those that haven't got out and registered to vote, do so and then go vote. Thank you very much. Motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? We're out of here.